Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Maryville Town Council meeting for today, Tuesday, January 10th. Please rise for our invocation and then remain standing for a moment of silence.
Oh God, our Father, the excitement in this room as we see our children. Father, would you bless them? Let them continue to learn, to grow, and achieve. Father, for the obstacles, the blessings, the future of this community that lies within this new year. Father, we pray for wisdom, and knowledge, and skill, and abilities. But most of all, Father, we pray for your power to be seen in the lives of men and women as they live for you. We dedicate this to you, Lord, and say thank you in the name of Jesus.
Amen.
Now, a moment of silence, please. Councilman Hardaway, would you please lead us into pledge tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk Treasurer, would you call the roll, please?
Vice President Hardaway?
Here.
Councilman Minchuck?
Here.
Councilman Muzlak?
Here.
Councilman White?
Here.
Councilman Spann?
Here.
Councilman Pettit?
Here.
President Bella?
Here.
We have seven members. Thank you. Moving on tonight to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. I'll turn it over to Councilman Minchuck to recognize the Pop Warner State Championship teams.
Mr. President, I am very excited that you do this. We have three teams to recognize tonight, which is just outstanding.
Great.
The first team I'd like to call up, I'd like to have the Maryville 12U Pirates please come up to the table here, please, all of you.
Why don't you guys come around and face?
Yeah, let's face out, yeah, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Sure you're off to town a little bit, boys.
Wow, look at the trophy. That's cool.
Mr. President, Town of Maryville, I would like to present to you the Maryville 12U 2023 State Champion Pirates.
All right.
Oh, we got more.
Put it on the table, Stephen.
Mr. President, this team here has been to the state championship game four times, and they've won two state titles.
That's awesome.
And I'd like to announce the roster. We have Jason Del Sol, Terry Ervin, and before I go any further, boys, there may be a couple I mispronounced, I apologize. Jordan Fracata, Maurice Ford Jr., Maxwell Gurnick, Louis Hogan Jr., Nathan Holmquist, Jaden Mansfield, A.J. Minchuck, Ojo Palomi, Kayden Osiz, Kai Parker, Kavion Robinson, Adrian Roosto, Brian Stack, Austin Vanderwood, Curtis Walker, Marcus Williams. Their head coach, Stephen Minchuck, assistant coach, Michael Carpenter, assistant coach, John Del Sol, assistant coach, Paul Hyde, assistant coach, Eric Jackson, assistant coach, Andrew Vanderwood, trainer, Shonda Robinson, and team parent, Daniel Walker. Please join me in applauding these gentlemen and these coaches. Thank you, boys.
So, Councilman, I heard a lot of Minchucks mentioned there. Is any relation to you?
There's always Minchuck somewhere, sir.
Okay. Well, nice job, everyone. Congratulations.
For our next team, for our next team, I'd like to call up the Maryville 2023 JV Cheer Team. Please come forward. That's okay, girls. Come on up. Mr. President, Town of Maryville, I'd like to introduce to you the Maryville 2023 State Champion Pop Warner JV Cheer Team. Not only are these girls state champions, they went and they competed nationally, and they were ranked seventh in the entire country for our hometown right here in Maryville. Congratulations.
Wow.
Once again, here's me with the names. Arianna Allen, Rahil Dickerson, Lea Ervin, Mariah Harris, Mackenzie Joseph, Tylin Morris, Isabel Noakowski Kazukas, Mackenzie Oliviera, Gwyneth Omen, Jada Oscar, Morgan Randolph, Alexis Stewart, Peyton Tomlin, Haley Vargas, Aleah Wilderness, Jamaya Wilkins, Elia Williams, and Maya Winston. Their head coach is Lakeisha Joseph, assistant coach, Alwyn Harris, and team parent, Brittany Ervin. Join me in applauding for these girls and their big... Thank you very much, girls.
Congratulations.
I could be here all night doing this, Mr. President. Yes, I can. If we got more kids, we'll be here all night. Next, I'd like to call up the Maryville 10U Pop Warner Team. Mr. President, Town of Maryville, I'd like to present to you the Maryville 10U 2023 We have Cameron Fielder, Cavallito Hoskins, Tyson Jackson, Jeremiah Joseph, Robert Lilly, Jaden Madison, Christopher McGee, Mason Mickey, I'm sorry, Mickel, I apologize, Mason, Justin Neely, Khalil Perry, Clifton Ratney III, Cameron Ricks, Faiman Spencer, Jace Higgit, Malik Tonkra, I knew I was gonna get one, Aiden Walker, Kyle White, and Marquise Williams. Their assistant coach, Hasani Adams, assistant coach, Rosito Hoskins, assistant coach, Quentin Sanders, assistant coach, Samuel Schultz, assistant coach, Andrew Vanderwood, team parent, Kim Kanil, and team parent, Shelby Lee. This team was led by head coach Eric Jackson, who is also the president of the Maryville Pop Warner Organization. Eric and his staff are a big reason why this youth sports program has become what it is and continues to grow every year, as we can clearly see here tonight. Not only do they teach performance on the football field, but academics and life skills. This is all done through on a volunteer basis to help Maryville youth have brighter futures. Thank you, Eric, your staff, coaches, players, cheerleaders, parents, and volunteers for making our town shine. You represent us well, and we will always be here for you. Ladies and gentlemen, let's cheer these kids on, let's show them that we're here for them. Mr. President, that is all I have. Maybe next year we'll have four teams.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Just a side note, Mr. President.
Sure.
For the residents and the taxpayers, this is what we get when we invest $24 million in the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. That field, these kids are practicing every day, working their butts off, and now we're reaping the benefits of that investment. So, to the council, thank you for supporting that. We all know what a success that center has been. This is an outstanding example of it.
Thank you.
So, should we give them an award, Mr. President?
Yeah, I think we just recognized them.
I didn't know what the $24 million paid.
Moving on tonight to nominations and election of the Town Council President for 2023.
Before we get there, can we let them?
Yeah.
Sure.
They're okay.
They're excited. I'm looking at Officer Evans here, and I'm like, she's like, let's get this going, huh?
Just while we're waiting for them to go out, I also want to thank the Maryville Fire Department and the Police Department guys for coming out and showing some support for the kids. I know I kind of reached out to the chiefs earlier today, they sent those guys out, trying to close the gap in a little bit between the youth of our town and our emergency.
Nice.
So, thanks for coming out, guys, appreciate it. You don't have to stick around all night if you don't want to.
Yeah, the rest is boring. Okay, moving on to nominations and election of the Town Council President for 2023. We'll open the floor.
Make a motion to nominate Rick Bella.
I will second that motion.
Nomination for me? Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations?
I make a motion, nominations be closed.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway to close nominations. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pettit. All in favor of closing nominations signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Do we need to vote, actually? Just the one candidate? All right. Moving on, then, we'll entertain a motion to accept the nomination and appoint myself as council president for this year.
I hear what you said.
A motion to just appoint me to this.
Second.
Don, second, your stand?
Yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Nominations are now open for a vice president of the council for 2023.
I'll nominate Richard Hardaway, please.
Motion by Mr. Minchuck to nominate Richard Hardaway. Are there any other nominations?
I will second that.
Make a motion, we close the nominations, Mr. President.
Would you mind adjusting your motion to close nominations and cast a unanimous ballot for Mr. Hardaway?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Also.
Questions or comments?
Just cast a unanimous ballot for yourself?
It's okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Mr. White, thank you. Thank you, guys. Moving on to the appointment of the town attorney for 2023. What is your pleasure?
Town Attorney?
Town Attorney.
Mr. President, I make the motion that we retain our current town attorney, Mr. Joseph Svetnov.
Second.
Motion to retain Joe Svetnov and his company, KDP, for the town attorney position. I assume that also includes Plan Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, Redevelopment Commission, and Economic Development Commission, is that correct?
Yes.
My motion stands.
Very good. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Joe, congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight to the appointment of the Police Commission Attorney for 2023.
I nominate Mike Deppi.
Second.
We have a motion to retain Mike Deppi for another year of 2023. Mrs. Muzlak, second by Mr. Pettit. Questions or comments on the motion? Chief, you said that you were good with that, right?
Yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. All right. Thank you, guys. Moving on tonight to the swearing in of police officer, Jillian D. Evans. I'll call on the judge to come forward, please. Officer Evans, Chief Newses, and the Police Commission. And speakers, please use the microphone that's been supplied on the table there, okay? Hi, Bill.
How you doing?
You want to say?
Good evening, everyone. This is soon to be Officer Jillian D. Evans. Would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Jillian D. Evans, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Indiana, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and honestly discharge my duties as police officer of the Maryville Police Department of the Town of Maryville, Indiana, according to law and the best of my skills and ability. So help me God.
Congratulations. So, Chief Newses, would you give us a little background about Officer Evans, please, before you continue? Use the microphone, please.
Officer Jillian... Officer Jillian Evans comes to us from Illinois. We're proudly welcoming her here as her new home in Indiana. She is a 2018 graduate of TF South in Lansing, Illinois. She's got an associate's degree in criminal justice. I didn't do that, I promise. She's got an associate's degree with criminal justice. She's had aspirations to be a police officer her entire life. She's... I feel that she's got a lot to bring to us, and we're happy to welcome you onboard. Moving forward, you can go anywhere from patrol to investigations to even the chief's position, if you like. The world is yours, and I think you're gonna do a great job. Welcome.
That's awesome.
Now, we come to the interim police chief of Maryville. Please raise your right hand. I, Constantine Svetnov, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Indiana, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and honestly discharge my duties as interim police chief of the Maryville Police Department of the Town of Maryville, Indiana, according to law and the best of my skills and ability. So help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge.
This time, I'd like to announce my selection for my assistant chief of police. Assistant chief is gonna be Josh Gonzalez. You can step on up, Josh. Just a little bit about Josh, he's a 14-year veteran here with the Maryville Police Department. He has been through almost every position in the department, from patrol to investigations to task forces. He's a smart guy. He's gonna do a great job. He's gonna be a great asset to the administration team. I feel that we're gonna do great things together. And even more importantly, I trained him from when he was a brand-new guy, so that gives him extra points, right? Welcome aboard to the admin crew, and I have great expectations of you.
All right. I'll take that, Chief. Thank you. Nice job. I get it. Congratulations to our new officer, new chief and assistant chief. Well done. Moving on tonight to the letter from our town engineering administrator and director of public works, Steve King, recommending acceptance of Unit 8 at Savannah Ridge. Mr. King?
President Bella, this is just a simple formality. This is a final inspection was completed for Savannah Ridge, the Unit 8. Inspection was completed in October, October 11th of last year by Robinson Engineering. All the public improvements were found to be satisfactory and in compliance with the town ordinances. The developers only require by ordinance to provide a 24-month maintenance bond, but he was gracious enough to provide us with a 30-month maintenance bond. So, I concur with Robinson Engineering that we accept the improvements for Savannah Ridge, Unit 8, into our inventory.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Minchuck? Did you have a motion for this?
I'm sorry.
This is the Savannah Ridge Unit 8?
Yes.
Steve King's letter?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, you were distracted.
I was...
I apologize.
I apologize.
So, a motion by Mr. Hardaway on the floor.
A second by me, March.
Oh, Mrs. Muzlak.
I have a motion.
Okay, thank you. And a second by Mr. Hardaway to approve the recommendation from our town engineer.
Right.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the accounts payable, register voucher for approval for January 10th, 2023, and the approval of the Town Council meeting minutes from the December 27th, 2022 meeting.
Mr. President, I'm sorry. I had something real quick, I'm sorry, March.
Okay, go on.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes. Also, with that motion, I would like to go ahead and table the register voucher approval from January 10th. There seems to be some discrepancies within there that need to be explained, need further explanation to the council. So, that's my motion at this time.
Mrs. Muzlak, you withdrew your motion to approve?
Yes, I will withdraw my motion.
So, the motion is now, then, for Mr. Minchuck with a second by Mr. Hardaway?
Yes.
To only approve the meeting minutes and table the payable register voucher. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Moving on tonight to standing and special committee reports, budget and finance, Mr. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
Council affairs, Mr. Pettit.
Mr. President, we need to reconvene the committee. I will turn to Mr. Svetnov. We have, I believe, Joe, five outstanding ordinances that we were discussing off of a list. So, I will find a date, Mr. President, after the Plan Commission. We have a Plan Commission meeting on next Tuesday. I'll find another date, possibly before the next council meeting. I'll get with Joe.
Okay.
See where we're at, and his associate was helping us with that.
And Mr. Pettit, too, just so you know, I asked Mr. Svetnov to investigate a couple ordinances we're working on with the Police Department. One's a fee ordinance, and the other is a nuisance ordinance. So, those will also be on consideration, too.
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
The fee, you said a fee ordinance? Can you explain?
That was gonna be a hotel, public safety fee, a room fee that users would pay at time of check-in.
Okay.
And that fee would help offset the tremendous amount of calls that the Police Department responds to in our hotel motel district.
Okay.
That's what that's for.
Good, thank you.
Sure. Sorry, I wasn't more clear.
That's all right.
Okay. Moving on to public works and utilities, Mr. Minchuck.
Nothing at this time, sir.
Elections, public relations, and town beautification, Mr. Pettit.
A couple things, Mr. President. I'm sure we're all aware, we're all political animals, selected officials, that filing has opened as of last Wednesday for the 2023 municipal election cycle. Secondly, under public relations, again, the Crossroads Regional Chamber of Commerce is gonna be hosting their Business Excellence Awards on March 9th. It's a Thursday evening from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. I'll defer to Mr. Hardaway during his report for the Black History Month event, and I believe that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Environmental affairs, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President. I haven't had an opportunity to get involved in it, but I have been watching in the terms of the actual caseloads going up. We're still in trouble here. They have a new situation called sudden death epidemic, where people just die, for whatever reason. I know, I just, like, the person was doing really well, what happened? So, they're starting to monitor, CDC is starting to monitor that as well. Don't have a lot of information on it, but that's pretty much my report. And we're still at the mid-range in the terms of caseloads again. I wish I could tell you more, but my brain's not processing a lot right now.
Understand.
I would like to add to that. Right now, the flu epidemic is very strong. It's the strongest that it's been in the last 10 years. So, everybody should get a flu shot, if at all possible. And that's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Personnel, policy, and employee benefits, Mr. Hardaway.
Yes, Mr. President. We are currently taking applications for public works. We have some openings there, and I think the deadline is next week. Next... No, it is Friday, I'm sorry. The deadline for accepting the applications, and then hopefully next week we will be interviewing. We have four openings, and so we will look to fill those first part of next week.
And Mr. Hardaway, what kind of jobs are these?
These are just Labor 1 jobs. That's entry level, and I think, what is it, 2163 an hour?
With the increase we just got, it's 2207.
2207 an hour, that's, which is, that's decent salary for starting out. If you have a CDL, it's the plus, but if you don't have a CDL, then you have 90 days to get it once you are hired.
And I believe we're doing that training now ourselves, right?
Yes, it's in-house.
There's no cost to the employee, right?
Right. Otherwise, it would cost them $5,000 to get a CDL. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Public safety, Councilman Minchuck.
Yes, public safety had a meeting last week. We sat down with some of the surrounding police departments that surround our town to see if we can kind of help each other out a little bit, a little bit mutually. I know you were there as well, Mr. President. We tossed around a lot of ideas from a lot of administration from different departments. Looks like it's gonna be an ongoing thing for a little bit here, so hopefully good things will come out of it. So, we will continue on next month. Hopefully, we get some answers to some of the questions we had last week, and we'll move from there.
Good. Economic development, Mr. Pettit?
No report.
Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Mr. White?
Can I go back to public safety?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just wanted to address this, because my brain was moving slower these days. I just want to address the Public Safety Committee based on the fact that I think all of us as council people have experienced an uptick in gunshots in each one of our committees. So, I know each one of us has experienced you. So I know each one of us has experienced, you, you, all of us have experienced. So I talked to Casa about it, because I think it seems like, I talk to him all the time about those gunshot things, and it's worrisome. Not that I'm not, not that I've not been around gunshots. I just need us as a public safety, which is one of the things I'm looking forward to tightening up on out there. We can't have people running around here just shooting, because it makes the town look bad, even though we do a lot of great things. At the end of the day, it makes the town look bad when you have a town that comes to Myers and they have a shootout there. Even though it was a domestic, nevertheless, but that's not the first time at Myers, actually. I've seen it run across the street. I'm sure you have, March. Don Span, I got calls from your ward the other day saying that the police were running and shooting at a guy behind their house. And I did talk to Casa about it, and he did verify that that happened. So what I'm just basically saying, it's time to put our foot down really hard. I know you can't, especially with the young people, because I think the young person they was chasing the other day, they act like they don't understand. They wear, it's a badge of honor to commit crime. I just think we got to put our foot down really hard to let these people, whoever, know. And they always don't come from Gary either, by the way. You know, that seems to be always from Gary. Happened right here in Berkeley Village, the guy that, you know, caused the issue. So I would like to see this year us just putting our foot down a little bit harder. And I know we're going to have to work Public Safety, the police chief. I just want to bring that up, because it's still a serious situation. And I think anytime I got to call the chief and say, you know I'm at chief, right? And he'll let you know. So I just want to make that, maybe that might be something you want to talk about at your next Public Safety meeting.
Joe, is there anything that we can do to curtail the people who like shooting their guns up in the air on New Year's Eve and Fourth of July weekend? I mean, we talk about it often. Is there an ordinance that we can put in place to at least give the police department some enforcement capabilities?
Chief, would you like to chime in on this one real quick?
I mean, ultimately, it's criminal recklessness.
Criminal, it's bad.
So it's an actual criminal act that they're committing. The thing that we have found on times like New Year's, per se, you have probably five, six hundred people out there firing guns. It proves to be a great obstacle. Of course, if we come across them before we see them, of course, we arrest them. We put charges on these people. However, the problem comes where they'll do it, we don't catch them in the act. But that is an actual criminal act, and, you know, we, if there are, and I know technology is increasing now, so everybody's got a Ring Doorbell. If there are devices like that that can assist us, you know, we can try and do something.
What if we have a video from a neighbor who was concerned and actually videotaped the person shooting off a gun in the air on New Year's Eve? Is there something the police department can do with that?
Sure, we could look at it, investigate it, and present it to the prosecutor's office and see what we can work with. Absolutely.
At least bring awareness to the issue, yeah.
If you have a video or if you have a live witness, it's witnessing the act being committed.
Yes, Mr. President, I appreciate us looking at the New Year's Eve shootouts. These ones pretty much happen before New Year's.
I know that, yeah.
And after New Year's. But I, yeah, it still sounds like, well, from my old school, Beirut on New Year's Eve.
Well, I noticed this year it seemed like it was heavy, as I've noticed ever.
So I just want to bring that to additionally toward attention, so we can, I just think now that there's some silent situations that I think the chief, I think the fee structure is going to be good to, you know, where we can get more officers out there on the street. I just want to be able to tell people we're taking some type of action. Thank you.
So Chief, too, when someone shoots a gun off in the air and it travels up a mile and a half or two miles, that bullet does have to come down somewhere, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's what happens at City of Hammond, where a kid, a few years ago, fifteen-year-old kid, somebody shot the gun up in the air, and a bullet came down and killed the kid.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Span?
Comment. I have one of those Ring Doorbells.
Yeah.
That you could camera out. And it was some lunatic driving with, I don't know if it was six or seven police cars behind him, but I got the tire tracks in my yard to prove it. I think they caught him, because there's no exit out on my subdivision. But that was, just to see something like that, wow, it was something to see.
All right, moving on, Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Yuzle.
Yes, I had a call, Torrance, from some people in the fourth ward. And did you get the bids on the roof for the shelter at Rosenbaum Park, in Rosenbaum Park?
Not yet. I mentioned last time, we had bids last April for them, and we have been reaching out trying to get four new ones for them. So when we get them, we'll inform and let you know.
Okay, that's what we're waiting for. That is an eyesore right now. But thank you. And that's it, Mr. President?
Thank you. Abandoned and blighted properties, Mr. Hardaway.
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Dean and Barbara White Community Center.
Thursday night, Mr. President, we have a joint meeting between the Budget and Finance Committee and the Dean and Barbara White Community Center Committee meeting in executive session at five-thirty at the center. We will be going through the operating budget for the center.
Thank you.
No room, that's in, Sean?
I do not. Torrance, do you know which one she gave us?
We have one that's open, so I'm going to assume it's either probably three.
We'll get it figured out.
Yeah.
Moving on to Special Projects Committee, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are in the process of planning for our first annual Black History Dinner celebration. Pat, you didn't put out the flyers to the council?
Right, I did not.
Thank you. Anyway, the tickets are seventy-five dollars apiece. And so if you know anyone that's interested in purchasing the ticket, they can purchase some either at Town Hall or Community Center. We're looking for a good time. The keynote speaker will be a gentleman out of Indianapolis. He's the Senior Vice President for Eli Lilly and Company, and his name is Alonzo Weems. So you can Google him, and you'll find out everything that you need to know about this guy. So that's going to be February the twenty-third, which is a Thursday evening. So we encourage everyone to come out and support this endeavor. There will be other things that's going on as well. We'll have, along with the speaker, we'll have music and some dancers and a lot of stuff. So come on out, you and the Mrs., Jeff, and let's show our support for this. Also, the only, the other things that'll be coming up will be, after we get through with the Black History Dinner, then we're going to start planning for our Juneteenth. And I think that we don't want to try to start planning for the Juneteenth right in the middle of this, because there's still a lot of things that we need to concentrate on. So I, but I encourage anybody that wants to, anybody on the council that wants to still be a part of this Black History Celebration meeting. Next meeting is next week at, no, next Wednesday, I'm sorry.
At noon?
At noon, next Wednesday at noon. So any council members is welcome to come. And when we start planning the Juneteenth, it will be the same kind of scenario, where the council will be able to come, and we will be looking for help coming from the Community Center staff as well as some people in building and planning.
And Rich, I got the, I received the artwork from Rick, and I'll let you know what signs are available. She's going to check which signs are available on the Lamar digital side.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate that, Sean, because we need to get it out to, you know, all over. Because normally, people say, well, I didn't know, I didn't know. And so I think that, you know, we got flyers, posters, and message boards all over town. And we're going to have banners flying across Broadway here by the, probably first of next week.
And just a reminder, Sheila, you have the list, which I've kind of forgotten in some of our other events to mention. When we give a approval, a use variance for a digital message, not an off-premise billboard like I do, but the on-premise stuff, like Walter E. Smith, like Lake Mortgage, like our buddy Mr. Alt at the old radio station, that ordinance requires that they put up PSAs like this for us. So Sheila has that list of people that have those on-premise message boards.
And she has made contact with all of them.
Okay, good.
So she's done an excellent job in notifying these people that she's going to be sending them. She's got all the emails, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
So she'll be emailing everyone and making them aware of any events.
Oh, that's right, she did call me, by mistake.
That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
Yeah, I'd just like to add to the conversation about Black History Month. As you know, this is something I tried to do last year and didn't get the support. What I do think needs to happen, Mr. President, is that you have additional, not just saying that other people can show up as councilpeople, but you have additional African-American councilmen that, and an African-American clerk that might want to have some input, because most of the time I see these things are already done. So I just want to be constant that we count.
Absolutely. In fact, I was there today myself.
Yeah, I tried to make.
It was a rather robust meeting. We were wondering where you were, actually, and I mentioned that you're probably not feeling well. But yeah, every council member and department head are invited to these meetings.
I'd just like to be a variety of ideas to.
Yeah, I'd love to hear them.
I mean, everybody.
Yeah.
You know, so we can kind of be on the same page, because this is something I tried to do last year, and this is the first time it's been done. You know, people say, I've been here twenty years. This is the first time it's been done in twenty years. And it's good that it did come about. I just want to just, you know, make that statement from, not from a councilman as much as, but as from an African-American perspective. Thank you.
Mr. White, why don't you keep the floor and talk to us about the Lake County Solid Waste Management District?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I wish I could talk about the solid waste district, but, you know, they meet bi-monthly. And that appointment, I had already told them that some appointments might not be the same this year, so I don't have a report from them, but I.
Well, we'll be doing appointments at the next council meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to the Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, our representative is Councilman Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Riordan, what about the broadband conversation?
We will be represented there. Angie Chocat will be present. I'm going to go as well.
You're going to go yourself?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's, Mr. President, is July the twentieth, from eleven to one P.M. at the Northwest Indiana Forum Office, out at the same building that NERCE is in. And it's an expert panel to discuss broadband in Northwest Indiana, federal and state resources, impact on economic development, and to discuss what providers are investing in Northwest Indiana. So I think it's something that we really need, especially for Sean's area out there in the Panhandle. Our next, NERCE meeting is next week, next Thursday. And so at that time, they will be announcing the offices for two thousand twenty, for twenty-three.
Great.
That concludes my report.
Stormwater Management Resources, our director is Matt Lake, and he's been on vacation quite a bit the last couple of meetings. So we're happy to see you. I'm sure you have a report for us.
Just real quick, I did meet with FEMA this morning. We're coordinating on our five-year cycle visit for CRS. And during our discussions, we mentioned how many CRS communities there are in the state of Indiana. There's only eleven. We are ranked the best out of all of them. No one's a Class Seven, the rest are nines and tens. So we look forward to meeting with them, having our audit, and going through all the paperwork and keeping on top of all that. They provide over thirty million dollars of coverage for the town and residents. And so that's important when disaster strikes, you definitely need that coverage. Also, we're putting together annual reports for MS four compliance. It's that time of the year again, all the reporting and stuff to the state of Indiana. We're also going to be hosting the Northwest Indiana Regional Contractors Workshop. That's going to involve all the communities within Northwest Indiana, as well as all the developers, contractors, engineers are invited. This is an educational opportunity. It's also part of compliance with your MS four permitting. And so we're working with Barb to host that again at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. And the Marcela Road project is totally completed. We're signing a reimbursement. I again want to thank the Lake County Economic Development for the support there and providing a hundred forty-four thousand dollars, over a hundred forty-four thousand dollars worth of cost share through the grant. So I appreciate that, and that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Mr. President? I'm sorry.
Mr. White?
This question is for Matt, who always does a great job, but I still had to ask him certain things. So what's, what's, what I wanted to ask you was about the new retention pond basins over there on fifty-seventh?
The ones by Prusen Center or the future ones that were planned by Hickory Ridge Lake Apartments? Prusen Center?
Let's go with Hickory Ridge.
Hickory Ridge, the engineering is like basically ninety-five to a hundred percent completed. We're preparing an application to local, because our intention is to get fifty percent of the engineering covered on that. So that's going to be a pretty big project. We're talking on the millions, so we definitely want as much cost share as we can get and as many partners. But I would like to thank the, you know, their board for providing the easement that was, that took a while to get and to coordinate on. But so we anticipate starting that project later this year.
Does that include that pumping station as well?
It's everything, yes. It includes the pumping station, because that was a big unknown. That's why there was a lot of engineering involved, because that whole thing get replaced, redesigned, and everything else, given the circumstances, looking at all the drainage area within that particular vicinity, and trying to count and detain that water as much as possible, so that area doesn't flood out. As you know, the apartments are in jeopardy right there.
Yes.
Being the first floor, having a lot of water coming through there. And then you got lateral six and everything coming from Gary. And so we've been studying even areas in Gary and trying to get parcel for future detention on that side. And Joe Svetinoff has been a great help in trying to secure those parcels through tax sales and things like that. So we're working with, you know, with Joe and with Lake County Parks and all that, trying to take advantage of some of that open space.
Sure.
Especially where we know there's probably not going to be development occurring. And so we can retrofit detention, because as you know, a lot of these areas were built without detention in mineback, you know, before the town was a town, you know, a lot of cases, so. So that's the Hickory Ridge Lake, Prusen Center, everything, those two parcels, detention parcels, they're functioning very well. Again, if we have a hundred-year storm event, you're going to notice them really fill up, and that'll park that water in those ponds until lateral six can get some relief, and then it'll enter that water back in. And if you ever want to take a tour or anything, let me know. We'll go through there and check it all out. And again, when there's big rain events, we get out and about and just like to observe the projects we've completed, because it's kind of affirmation of what we're doing is working. And so it's good to see, that's kind of the incentive to, you know, other than everything else we do, it's just affirmation of what we do and the things that we have going on in terms of implementation for flood control.
Well, thank you, Matt. Thank you for continuing to doing a great job that you've been doing with the stormwater. I think that you're helping the town of Maryville and you're keeping us safe environmentally. Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Lake, I'm going to be coming to you also and encouraging the town to take over the retention ponds that property owner associations and homeowner associations own currently. I just feel that they don't have the expertise to take care of them. And I know there's going to be a cost to maintain those, and the town's going to have to work that out with stormwater, because these are Maryville residents, and if something floods out, I mean, it hurts property values, right? And I think that we just need to do an inventory. I don't think there's many left, actually.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at the inventory that we have, like, ones are associated with subdivisions, I mean, like residential subdivisions.
Yep.
Right.
Those are typically the ones that are the most challenging, given the fact that POAs don't last a lot of times, and they, so.
Or don't exist.
So part of that.
That's the issue, yeah.
Yeah, we've gotten some good data, because, you know, we've outsourced some of the management in terms of mowing in some of those areas. So we got some good, like, cost assessments, evaluations for a future fee study. So that's something we can get with, maybe Senator and Senator, kind of project what that would entail financially, and then adjust accordingly.
Okay.
And I was going to, I was going to ask that, Matt, that you and Joe and I get together, because I got calls from Auburn Hills, and both outlots are in the Auburn Hills Property Owners Association. They never, ever wanted to, I was at the meeting when they said no to a homeowners association. The developers passed away, and now we're left with two outlots, just like we had in Sandpiper, Matt. So it's going to happen, unfortunately.
Yeah, we've been through this before with associations that have disbanded. Yeah, we've been through this before with associations that have disbanded, and the reason I bring it up now, too, is I attend the HOA meetings, right? And I see the officers struggling to get attendance, the budgets are very weak normally. Some of these homes are charged like $100 a year. There's not much an HOA can do with $100 coming from a house. And then if they take care of the pond, that's a big expense for someone else. I know we can do it with our equipment, with our expertise, and it just makes sense to me.
Well, and also, Mr. President, it's better to do it now. In my particular case, it's deeded in the Auburn Hills Homeowners Association, both lots, Matt.
Right.
Let's get it now, so we don't go through Sandpiper or the Preserve. In my neighborhood, we paid $52,000 for that retention pond in back of those homes on Illinois. That was absolutely ridiculous. Because we let it go so far, it goes to tax sale, some person outside of Maryville or Indiana acquires that parcel and then holds us hostage to get it. And it serves no purpose other than draining those subdivisions, so.
So maybe let's get an inventory of what's left and what we would need to do.
Yeah, and we can do a fee study based on those areas, because, again, you got to look at costs, you know, and we can certainly do that with, I think, Carl Center, and maybe with one of our engineering firms.
Mr. President, with that addition, back to Matt, when you do the inventory, would that also include the pond inside of Berkeley Village? Because I know that was on a tax sale at one time, so I don't know who was responsible for it.
Yeah, these would be all retention basins.
All retention ponds, yeah.
Yeah, ponds.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll just, the town will take that over then? Is that what you're saying?
Well, that's the hope, that's our goal.
Possibly.
Yeah, possibly. We're gonna investigate it to see what that's going to cost, what the legalities are with it, and take it from there.
Thank you.
We'd also have to talk our insurance with liability and stuff like that.
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. South Shore Visitors and Convention Authority, Mr. Reardon.
Good evening. We have our first meeting of the year next week. The council and department heads can look for the weekly circular of events and activities, and that concludes my official report.
Thank you. Fire Territory Board, Mr. Minchuck, Mr. Span, any reports?
They have nothing scheduled at this time.
Mr. Reardon, anything else from administration?
No, sir, not at this point.
Okay. Moving on tonight to general orders, we do not have any first reading ordinances, nor do we have any second reading ordinances. So we will move on to resolutions tonight. Resolution 23-01. It's a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, retroactively transferring monies within the 2022 budget.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Hardaway, second by Mr. Pettit, for approval of Resolution 23-01. It's a variety of police department line items. The total decrease is $5,986.39. The increase is the same, and the net effect is zero. Questions or comments on the resolution? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Resolution Number 23-02. This is a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Indiana, encumbering monies from the 2022 budget into the 2023 budget year. This is the resolution that I think I shared with most of you that Clerk Treasurer Kelly White Gibson wasn't supporting because we felt this was turned in too late. But I think our approach should be just to approve it, and then we could work that out with Kelly. Do you have anything to add, Robin, on this ordinance?
I have a statement for Kelly. It was just on the discussion that all departments were notified on November 9th that we had a deadline to turn in encumbrances. The deadline was December 6th. On January 6th, Public Works turned in 45 encumbrances without so much as a phone call. One entire month after the deadline. The Clerk Treasurer is not intending to complete these, and she believes the deadlines are set for a reason. And the complete and utter disregard for the deadlines must stop. The efforts to supersede the directives of the Clerk Treasurer are disrespectful and will not continue to be tolerated.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Yes, this is a question for Robin, correct?
Yes.
Now, which department did 40? You said 46?
45.
45? Which department was that now?
Public Works.
Public Works, okay, thank you.
Motion to approve 2302, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mr. White, for approval of 22-03, and open for discussion. So Mr. King, can you enlighten us as to why these were turned in past the deadline? I think someone was on vacation or something.
Um, yeah, I'll have to find out, because.
Okay.
Yeah, I was on vacation, too, so I'll get back with you on that.
All right. Any other discussion on this? Mr. Svetnov, anything to add, based on Clerk Treasurer's letter?
No, I think, I think I weighed in before, and Trista's weighed in before from Senator and coming on this.
Okay, okay.
We both have views. We all have views.
Trista, do you have anything to add on this particular resolution? And is this creating a hardship for the Clerk Treasurer's office to do this?
I was made aware of these bills from the bookkeeper during one of our conversations as we were discussing the year-end closeout items.
Okay.
She informed me that the Public Works Department had turned in some bills at the end of the year that was past the deadline. There was apparently some vacation time, and when the email came out, the deadlines and things, I don't have all those details, but, so the bookkeeper and I discussed any possible solutions to that. We discussed encumbrances. She was fine with that process. I stayed in touch with her as we were preparing it. She had the opportunity to proofread the resolution prior to giving it to the town administration's secretary for the agenda, so that everything was in good order as far as matching the values, you know, proofreading the values, matching them to the vendors' names, so that everything you have on that resolution is correct. So the Clerk Treasurer herself was not involved in that phone call or in the email with that copy, but the bookkeeper certainly was involved during all that process.
So Trista, do you talk to the Clerk Treasurer when we do resolutions like this, and encumber or transfer funds?
Not that often, no, because it's her staff that handles the processing of them, and so those are the people that I have contact with on a regular basis.
Mr. President, can I ask a question of Trista and Steve?
Go ahead, Mr. Pettit.
Are any of these vendors, to the best of your two knowledge, are any of these Maryville businesses that we're engaging with, that we're not paying or may want to pay, or we decided deadline, not informing the town council of a deadline, and we've got Maryville vendors that we're not paying? That doesn't look good, guys. That's a bad image.
Yeah, I would say probably.
I don't care who it is, I don't care who the elected official is, that's a bad image when we're not paying our bills. End of story.
Many of them are Maryville vendors. I could pull that up and tell you what they are.
That's all I needed to hear, Trista.
Any other discussion?
Call for the vote, Mr. President.
All in favor of approving of Resolution 23-02, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The same sign? Motion carries. Robin, please let Kelly know that we approved this, and we'll talk about it more. Moving on tonight to Resolution 23-3. It's a resolution of the Town of Maryville, supporting the election of Superior Court Judges in Lake County, Indiana. And Robin, I would like to ask you to read this one for the record, please. Yes.
A resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, supporting the election of Superior Court Judges in Lake County, Indiana. Whereas the Lake County Superior Court, County Division, and the Lake Superior Court Criminal Division and the Civil Division Judges are appointed by the Governor of the State of Indiana. And whereas, the State of Indiana uses different systems whereby 88 counties have judges that are elected by the residents of the county, and four counties, Lake, Allen, Marion, and St. Joseph, have judges selected through a process that includes a judicial nominating commission comprised of members, some of whom are appointed by the governor. Selecting and sending nominees to the governor, who then chooses from those nominees, those persons who will be judges in those four counties, and chooses those nominees, those persons who will be judges in those four counties. And whereas, in order to give the residents of Lake County a voice in the selection of judges, the Maryville Town Council supports the election of all Superior Court Judges in Lake County, Indiana. Now, therefore, let it be resolved as follows, that the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, supports the election of all Superior Court Judges in Lake County, Indiana, and that the Indiana General Assembly prepare and enact the necessary legislation to establish the election procedure for the same.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Hardaway, with a second by Mrs. Uzleak, for approval of this Resolution 23-3, supporting the election of Superior Court Judges in Lake County, Indiana. Questions or comments on the motion? I know this is a resolution and a voice vote is proper, but I would like to go on the record and have a roll call vote, so that when Mr. Reardon sends this on to the state, we can attach our minutes to that and show our support. So, Robin, roll call, please.
Councilman Span.
Aye.
Vice President Hardaway?
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Uzleak?
Yes.
Sorry. Councilman White?
Aye.
President Bella? Oop, Councilman Pettit, my apologies. President Bella?
Yes. That's seven in favor, the motion carries. So Mr. Reardon, please forward this to the proper authorities. That concludes our resolutions tonight. Moving on to the American Rescue Plan Accounts Payable Voucher, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under Budget and Finance, I omitted the fact that we approved two, two new petitions this afternoon. And tonight's Accounts Payable Voucher is for $449,172.07. I make a motion that we approve this voucher.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, with a second by Mr. Pettit, to approve the Accounts Payable ARP voucher. Questions or comments on the motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. White.
I'm trying to find out exactly what was an add, are you saying that you had a minute to add something to this particular voucher?
It was the approvals tonight during the regular ARP meeting of two residents who applied for.
That's not on there.
Oh, okay.
We had a meeting this afternoon with two people.
So we won't approve that?
That'll be next time. Well, you won't approve that until they get the work done, and then they submit the invoice.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
But both of those petitions were approved, right, Mr. Hardaway?
Big part?
They were both approved.
Both of them approved. One of them was approved with condition.
Yeah, Ms. Schein and her office will notify them tomorrow with the procedure.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to Board of Zoning Appeals and Large Gathering Actions. I'll give the floor to Mrs. Schein.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three petitions this evening. The first petitioner is Edgar Topia. Would you please come to the podium here, please? Petitioner is seeking special exception approval to allow a dining restaurant located at 1, located on 1.89 acres in a C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District. Petitioner is proposing to relocate the El Poblano Restaurant. The proposed relocation will not negatively affect the community as it would replace a vacant restaurant site. Utilities are already in place from the previous business entities, and neither the parking needs or egress-ingress will not be altered. The restaurant was established in Maryville in 2018 and has remained complying to all town ordinances. The business seeks to bring more customers to the area. Current hours of operation are 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Tuesday through Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday, and 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Sundays. The restaurant is closed on Mondays. Petitioner is aware of the camera ordinance. The petitioner has provided a site plan and a menu for your review. The petition, for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only. And this is located at 8255 Georgia Street.
Mr. President, motion to approve for discussion?
Second for discussion.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit, with a second by Mr. Minchuck. We are now open for discussion.
Edgar, what are you going to do with the facility? Are you leasing the facility up north here?
Yes.
You are that space, so that building is owned by someone else?
Yes.
Okay. For the benefit of the council, this is the old Abuelos or the Athenian?
No, no, the Athenian.
Well, it was Abuelos, then it was Athenian.
Oh, yeah, right, right, sorry.
It's okay, you come to Ward 6, Rick, I don't care.
It's too big, I don't like it.
Good luck to you. He's taken over a vacant building, as Sheila alluded to, over on Georgia Street, so good luck to you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this petition?
Yeah, just reassuring, I'm sorry, I know you're walking away, I apologize.
Edgar, yeah, we're not quite finished yet, we need to vote.
I apologize. So I know you asked this already, but I'm gonna make sure the one on Broadway is staying, right?
Yes.
Okay, now I'm gonna vote for it, okay.
The one on Broadway is staying?
Yeah, but my uncle is gonna run that place over there.
Oh, okay.
Same name, same type of food?
No, it's kind of the same food, but with a different name.
Well, I was just calling you, if the one on Broadway closes, I'm voting against this.
No, it's.
All right, we're good then, all right. Held hostage.
So Edgar, how many square feet is the, gonna be your new restaurant? It's pretty large, isn't it?
How many square feet? I'm not sure, but it's.
Ms. Schein, how, what's the square footage?
Of the new one? I don't, I don't have that.
It's pretty big. It's huge.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, let me look at my plans. No, I don't have a square footage.
I think it's like 300 people.
I'm sorry?
It's for like 300 people, I think.
It'll seat that many?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, Edgar, I want to wish you luck. It's a big undertaking, and we're happy to see an empty building be refilled, okay? Especially with your restaurant, so. Any other discussions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Our second petitioner is Hassan Ali, Special Exception Approval at 5970 Broadway for a auto repair shop. Petitioner is seeking Special Exception Approval from Section 21-136 to allow an automobile repair shop in a C2 Community Commercial Zoning District on 0.41 acres. Petitioner will provide oil change, small mechanical, and exhaust remediation services as site previously operated an automotive repair shop. This exception will not negatively affect the surrounding communities. Petitioner will limit repair options as not to cause any harm to the community. The proposed shop will also use existing utilities, access road, drainage, and ingress and egress. Petitioner will follow all guidelines provided by the associated municipality. There will be no red cars on site, and no overnight parking in rear or front parking lot after hours. Petitioner is aware of the camera ordinance. Petitioner has provided a site plan for your review. The shop will employ three staff members. Hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Will use ADT for security. Petitioner has provided a site plan for your review, and petitioner was deferred on November 16. The Board of Zoning Appeals approved this three. They also put a condition on it for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only. And the Board of Zoning Appeals did say that they could park seven vehicles to be stored in the rear of the property behind the building.
Can we get Ms. Schein a glass of water?
Yes.
Which district is this? Is this Mr. White or Mr. Hardaway?
It's Councilman White.
It was in 2022.
It still is all year, wondered. It still is. We still represent our existing.
That's his, that's his ward, anyway.
Yeah.
I thought when they did the redistricting that changed.
It doesn't take effect till next year.
Oh, so I can calm down for a minute, huh?
Yeah, it's only in effect for the elections, right. Yeah, the people who voted us in office, we still represent them until next year.
Oh, okay. You know, that's how I felt when I heard the information that everything had changed. I heard it was in Ward 6 and 1/2. I'm like, that's how I feel.
Well, this is, go ahead.
Okay, that's it.
That's it?
Pass that down, yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion from the board? Gentlemen, would you like to say anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Attorney Nathan Vis on behalf of the petitioner, Hassan Ali. Ms. Schein, again, appreciate working with you. And as we indicated to the Board of Zoning in December, my clients are seeking to operate an automobile repair shop. They've successfully operated a full-fledged automobile repair shop in the town of Hobart for the past five years. And it's noteworthy to note that in that five years, they've garnered a large following, and that following includes other municipalities such as the city of E Chicago and the town of Hobart, which sends some of their municipal vehicles to my clients to be repaired there. This is about an acre and a half. The backside of this location is wooded. There are five lots. The front is asphalt in wonderful shape. On the far right side of this premises is a fence that circles away all the way around to the back, and the woods in back separates it from residential locations. It's my understanding that there's been some consternation with a similar type business in the adjacent area. We've had good dialogue with your board as well as with Ms. Schein about that. My clients understand those concerns. What we requested was the ability to have up to seven vehicles, if necessary, to be parked overnight. They would be parked in the back. And questions raised, well, why this? Why might that be necessary? My client anticipates based upon past operation, you have those folks that drop off their vehicle for next morning, you perhaps have those folks that don't pay, you perhaps have those vehicles where you're waiting on a repair part and it might be necessary. Our observation, based upon proposed use, is that seven, up to seven, if necessary in the back, is what we would be proposing. Again, we recognize the concern up the street, but we're trying to remedy that by maximizing that, as well as giving the town, in case they were to violate that and they're not planning on it, the leverage to come in at that particular location. This is a zone C2. Automobile repair shop is allowed, but again, it requires the approval of this body. So thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Schein, what was this business prior to this?
It was an automobile repair shop.
It was a repair, okay.
It has six bays, yes.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve for six months, conditionally. It's probably will be good, but I just want to make sure that when we allow businesses to come in, we feel good about it. And right now, I don't have enough information, other than knowing that that's something that you want to do, so I, at this time, recommend a six-month, conditionally. And, did I say that right?
You're asking for a, for a six-month review?
Yes, six-months review, I'm sorry. In addition to that review, I just want to also see someone having, I'm hard to speak here now. Someone, constantly pick up paper out there, that's all I'm saying. I'm a stickler about litter, and as I drive past every day, I start, you know, even though you could pick it up today, I just wanted to be consistent with that. That's my vision, and that's, that's my motion, sir.
Second with the housekeeping instruction.
Okay. Mr. Svetnov, how do we handle that type of motion? Just gonna add another condition, that there'll be a six-month review of this petitioner?
Six-month review on petitioner regarding all aspects of the business, including but not limited to parking vehicles on the property itself in the fenced-in area, and the gathering of trash or litter on the business itself, making sure they keep it clean.
So, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Chairman, just two clarifying questions. I guess, would that be a review before this body, or would that be a review with Ms. Schein's department? Just that I understand what's to be expected.
Go ahead, Sheila. Ms. Schein's department will review it and report back to this body.
We will report back to this body. Okay. And as far as then, the housekeeping and the exterior, my understanding, we've got the Lake Michigan winds that are blowing up and down. We might hope that the trash of exterior folks, especially if you have, as we know, used to work back in Wisconsin in a grocery store, and we have those float everywhere, I just would hope that those wouldn't be held against my client. It's not like my client's type of business produces a lot of trash. It's all work that's done on the inside.
You still have to, you still have to keep it clean, doesn't matter where the trash comes from, because I'm sure that even as you get some, and I'm sure you get some trash from Strack and Van Tiel and other stores out there, but also, I can guarantee you, there's a couple of $20 bills that also roll up there from time to time.
I, I'm Dutch, so I might ask for a job to, to clean up.
It behooves you to keep the property looking proper, anyway, so that's all we're asking, really.
We understand.
And then you're okay with the condition about the seven vehicles? So in the next six months, that's something that code enforcement's gonna be watching for and report back to us. He's not gonna report to you, they're gonna bring that information back to us, so.
Understood.
Mr. Svetnov, does that cover it?
That covers it.
Any other discussion on this petitioner? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Schein.
Our last petitioner is Vanessa Yanance, and she is seeking special exception approval for the restaurant located at 2486 West 81st Avenue in a C3 highway commercial zoning district. Petitioner is seeking special exception approval from Section 21-136 to allow a dine-in Mexican restaurant in a C3 highway commercial zoning district. The proposed restaurant would be called Las.
Jacarandas.
Mexican Grill. The site is located in a plaza where the restaurant previously existed. As such, the space is already built out for dine-in restaurant service. The addition of the restaurant would not change the utilities ingress-egress. The petitioner will have 30 seats. The petitioner has been in contact with Independence Hill Conservancy District. Parking is adequate, and the petitioner is aware of the camera ordinance and has been approved by the Alcohol and Tobacco Commission for beer and wine permit. The restaurant will employ five people. The hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and on Saturdays, 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Saturdays and Sundays, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Petitioner was deferred on November 16, and her condition is for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only. She is going where the Master Barbecue used to be. That's the spot that they are taking.
Mr. President?
Mr. White.
Yes, Ms. Vanessa. Now, would you mind me asking, do you live in Maryville?
I do, yes.
Okay. The reason I'm asking that, because I also try to look out and see how many jobs possibly could be for Maryville residents. So since you're, you're here, I think that kind of covers most of what I was going to ask. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it, Mr. President.
So this is currently my district. I don't have any issues with this, and I'm glad, again, that we're gonna fill an empty spot. So I would ask Mrs. Yuzlak if she were to make a motion to approve, if you don't mind, because this will be your new district.
Right.
If you win election again.
Yes, I will make a motion to approve, and I'm very happy to see you come in there.
Thank you.
Second.
We need, we need the business. Thank you.
Motion, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Second.
In a, second, Mr. Pettit.
You took a breath in there.
For approval of this petitioner.
I was talking too much.
Could you please say the name again for us?
It's pronounced Las Jacarandas Mexican Grill.
All right.
Yes.
I'm getting hungry.
And you have, you have five people working there.
Yes, eventually when we get busier, we'll probably hire more people, so.
Okay, well, if you do, I hope they are Maryville residents.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion about this petitioner? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, congratulations.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
We'll see you for lunch.
Thank you.
Is there any old business tonight before our council? Is there any new business tonight?
I have old business.
Well, you'll have to wait to open to the public, if you don't mind.
Okay, let's move along, fellas, it's getting late.
I like hers.
That's, that is a, hey, ladies, that's a Ward 6 resident.
Oh, boy.
That's what you get out of the panhandle, right, Susie?
Susie, come on back, you're gonna be next, anyway. Come on back to the podium and get ready, okay?
Joe's sitting in the back there.
Any new business before us? Mr. Petrus is here, okay. Any new business tonight? Okay, there's no special presentations. Open to the public. Please state your name and address for the record, Susie, in half three minutes.
Susie White, 9170 Viago Street, San Piper subdivision, Ward 6. Wondering where we stand on the property that runs next to my home, that the town was supposed to attempt to purchase back from someone who'd bought it.
We own it, and you need to get your garden off my property.
I have no garden there, but I will continue to cut your grass and.
Thank you.
Pick up the sticks and.
That's Matt's grass now.
We appreciate that.
It's Matt's grass, oh.
Yeah, the town has taken it over.
Yeah, Joe, have we closed on that?
We didn't have to close. We, we're in the process of providing her her money. She had to fill out a federal tax form.
Okay.
For us, but we have title to it. We've recorded the deed, and the town now owns the property.
So in the future, when I have questions or issues I need to address, I will call Mr. Lake?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you so much.
And if you see any stray hunters, Dennis or Susie, contact the chief.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Call 911 and report it.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Now you can go home.
Unless it's Elmer Fudd.
Mr. President?
Robin, yes.
I just wanted to remind the council, while we're on the subject of not paying Maryville vendors, that by not approving the accounts payable register, no payments will go out tomorrow.
Thank you for the reminder.
For vendors, as well as contractors.
Yep, we're familiar with that.
About payroll?
It doesn't affect payroll.
Hello, Shonda Flowers, 6137 Connecticut Street, Maryville, Indiana. Question regarding to the Black History Committee, is that something that's open to residents as well to be a part of?
No.
No. So my question is, aside from the $75 first annual event for Black History, is there any other events that's planned? We have Martin Luther King holiday coming up. I know way back when I kind of first started, they used to have some type of program, not just for Black History, but I would love to also see if the town could possibly come up with a committee that we exercise the diversity that we do have, and that we celebrate and find ways of being able to pay some type of tribute to all the different ethnic backgrounds, something that you guys will possibly be open to, that's open to people from the public and the community who would probably like to participate in those type of programs. Especially Black History, we've had the first Black judge, we've had the first Black Chief of Police, we've had the first Black clerk. It would be nice that for that month in the front on that big, beautiful TV, that we can possibly do bios of those type of individuals that may have impacted our town.
Good suggestion, thank you.
Well taken, thank you.
Any other public comment tonight?
Good evening, Sabina Miller, 3120 West 75th Place, Maryville. I think the only public comment I have was related to some of these special BCA large gathering actions. I don't think we want to make the perception that we have double standards. So one business gets a special standard on picking up trash, the two restaurants do not. I think we need to have a consistent approach. We all know that restaurants produce garbage two by takeout or whatnot. I know I mentioned McDonald's before, which is always a mess in that area right there, just down the road from where this lady will take over Masters Barbecue. And I think that if we make any kind of requests from one business, we should make that request from all businesses to take care of their property. That's the only comment I have.
Is there any public comment tonight? Seeing none, announcements, town buildings will be closed in honor of Martin Luther King Jr. Day on Monday, January 16. The Plan Commission Public Meeting is January 17 at 6:30. The Redevelopment Commission Meeting is January 31 at 6 o'clock. Is that right, Mr. Pettit?
Yes. Um, yes.
Okay. And our next town council meeting will be January 24 at 6:30. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you.